Good evening. Calling the meeting to order. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Davis, I'm sorry.
Here.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Here.
Treasurer DeBarty?
Here.
Secretary Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Here.
Trustee Millschain?
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Tab A, we're going to have the approval of the minutes. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the February 28, 2023, monthly meeting minutes as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support? opposed? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Citizen participation. WCC Education Association, Ms. Julie Kissel.
Well, I'm happy to be back in this space. Wow, thank you. I think we can all hear each other. So it is March 2023. So during these past few weeks, my social media feeds have reflected on the many changes we've experienced over these three years. In March 2020, none of us could have anticipated such a change world, and I'm having issues with my progressives. There we go. Today, most of us have conversations punctuated with pre-COVID or post-COVID talk as we continue to reset what we do and how we do it. On campus, the Healthcare Committee and the newly established All College Safety Committee are planning meetings, and registration for spring, summer, and fall are well underway. Certainly, we are not returning to the pre-COVID world, but my hope, and the hope of President Blanca, I believe, is to take all we know now to make WCC the best it is in this post-COVID era. Regarding grievances, there have been some active member issues as of late. The WCC EA is working closely with our members to best represent them and uphold the processes dictated by our contract. Through contract implementation, the WCC EA continues to evaluate and advocate for a balanced approach to on-campus and remote work for our membership, and all of this is happening as we welcome the 2023-24 WCC EA Board after our March election. The group has met for the first time, and we're moving forward with plans to support and educate our membership, maintain high standards for online education and testing procedures, and plan for the many transitions that are so common today in our institution. So as I put my notes together for tonight's meeting, last month I remarked about the shooting at MSU. Sadly, one month later, the Nashville shooting is top of mind. As an educator for more than 25 years and as a parent of teenagers and young adults, the stress on our children and students is immeasurable. Today, I began a final research project in class which focuses on current events. I've been doing this activity in some form for years. It used to be that students would avoid the school shooting news, thinking that the event was the last of its kind. We know that Nashville is not the end, though. So what are we to do? That is the question around these shootings and also how we manage the never-ending changes. So what are we to do? So I went back to my notes from March 2020, and I was reminded that three years ago I spoke about connection and hope during the panic and uncertainty of the early days of the pandemic. Three years later, we're faced with new crises, and now we must act. Our actions to build positive connections to each other, our students and our campus must continue to drive our decisions as we strive to make that positive difference in people's lives through accessible and excellent educational programs and services. This is how we build a community and our community college, and this is how we will keep each other safe and advocate for change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none. Vanessa, were there any written communication? Thank you. Special report. Esports update.
Sorry?
Veronica's here.
Veronica.
Okay. Okay. Trustees, we're going to see the esports area firsthand. We'll follow Veronica. She will lead us to the golf courts. Golf carts.
Golf course, they'd be good.
I know. And that will transfer us there. So Veronica, she's over here. So we're going to follow her there now?
We're going. You may recall the esports was part of our strategic initiatives last year. Everyone was really excited with Pete Laskovich's presentation, and so now we will see how far they have come since their presentation last year, and we're going there. Maybe. Everyone's welcome to join us if you'd like. We're going to the TNI building. Unfortunately, the golf cart won't fit all of us, but we'll be back. Okay? Thank you.
Move on to monthly reports. Tab B for personnel recommendations. Tab B is the recommendation for the Board of Trustees to approve the personnel recommendation as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support?
We've been supported. VP Schwick, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next is the financial report. Tab C. Before we vote on the financial reports, VP Barnes, is there anything you would like to highlight for us?
Yes, thank you. Similar to comments in past months, I'll just mention that both the revenues and the expenditures are on a favorable trajectory. I'll recap briefly where we are. Fall and winter are preset, so the variances you see there are more or less which we should finish the year. Spring also on a very good trajectory so far, and student fees will end up at least $600,000 favorable. Right now, it's nine. I think it'll end up quite favorable, but at least it's six. Local property taxes, as I've mentioned in past months, we should finish the year at about $1.2 million favorable. The rest of that you see there, the $2 million favorable is a little bit of timing. We've just gotten it a little earlier than we thought. State appropriations also going well. Also, as mentioned, we should finish the year at about a half a million dollars favorable at the end of the year. And you can see there also I'll highlight investment income at a million dollars so far through the end of February, but we should end up at a minimum of $1.4 million by the end of the fiscal year. So you can see there we're at about 5.8 right now. I would say that's very close to where we should end up at the end of the year, five and a half or so, but there's still four months to go. Well, three in reality, but as end of this financial report for. In terms of expenditures, also things are going quite well. Lot of different reasons, some vacancies, attrition, also just some slower-than-expected spending in areas. So there it's also very favorable at 6.3 million favorable so far. I would say about a million dollars of that or so is timing. So in other words, it'll be spent by the end of the year. So that also should end up about five and a half or so, give or take, by the end of the fiscal year, which should leave us in a very good position overall, revenues less expenses.
Thank you. So, Tab C, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for February 2023 as follows: General Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule of Investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
Support?
We've been supported. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Next is the Facilities Development Report. VP Beschi.
Just a couple points I'd like to make in this month's report. If you look at item number 18 in the Deferred Maintenance, this, the sanitary main replacement, we thought we'd have enough information to make a recommendation tonight, but at this point, we really need a little more information from the responsive bidders before we can make an informed decision. And if you look at the Campus Repairs and Maintenance Projects, I'll make a point, number 10, Doors and Locks Repair, that's a new project that we opened up. There's a number of doors on campus that still are part of the old key system, and this project is going to switch them over to the new key system, and in the end, the campus will have one key system, which will be much easier to administer and require campus safety from carrying less keys. So concludes my report. Yes?
Is the key system still a physical key, or is it going electronic? Where are we headed?
We have a combination. So we have card axes, we have fobs, we still do have a hard key system as well. So this particular is a hard key system. We're just switching out to, the goal is to get down to one key system and not two.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm gonna move to remarks. Members of the Board of Trustees, anyone have any remarks? None?
I'll say a couple things, sure. So earlier in this meeting, we just went to see our beautiful esports arena, and oh my God, that has got to be the most gorgeous computing room I have ever seen in my life. It is beautiful. Wish I had that when I was in college, man. That is so beautiful. But one comment I would like to make on that is, I think this is a really remarkable program because one of the number-one things that I have heard from some instructors over the years is, one of the hardest things to teach in class is a group project, and esports is just a great way to bring a team together, learn how to work together, and it helps fill that gap in a way. And that's one of the other reasons why that esports is so important, to build that team skill with the students. And it is so beautiful. I want to, I'm gonna use my daughter's excuse and bring her during the open hours and see if we can play Mario Kart. It's just gorgeous. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much for that.
I would like to mention about a really good friend of my family, Gail Martin. Actually, we grew up together, but we went our separate ways, but we've known each other since grade school, if you will. And for a while, I lost track, not really knowing what her career ambitions and goals were, until I found out that she was very much into the arts, like dancing, singing, and things of that nature. I never had the opportunity to witness other than her singing at some of the events that took place here on campus, and needless to say, I was really impressed. I'm also even more impressed to find out that she is the recipient of the Lifetime Achievement Award that was given out to her on March 15th, and it totally slipped my mind on my calendar. I wanted to witness it firsthand, but I want to also take this time and space to give her my congratulations to her for the work that she's done here at the school, for being here for so long, and even that, I didn't know. You just don't know who you know, and then when you come across great information like that, it's always great to, you know, celebrate near success. And wherever she wants to go in life, I'm sure she would do just what she did here, just a marvelous job. And so I wanted to tell Ms. Gail Martin, thank you so much for the work and the dedication that you've done here at the college, and look forward to seeing other great things.
Chair, would you further describe the Lifetime Achievement Award? Who accorded it?
Um.
Was it the college?
It was WCC, if I'm correct.
Yes, but I'm not. Are you familiar with it, Vanessa?
I happened to find it on, like, pass the buck here. It's on the webpage, WCC's webpage, and I'm not sure, because I didn't think that, actually, I wasn't sure if WCC gave out Lifetime Achievement Awards.
I didn't think we did.
We're all happy for her.
Yeah, I don't know, but I was just like, wow, this is awesome, but I can get some background on that.
I think it's the department.
The department?
Right. Mooney Anderson was Gail's confidant and mentor and all that. So I think that's, because she had, Gail, states that Gail had been here.
Oh, it's not our award. They presented, we present, they used our location to present the award to her.
Okay.
That's why we didn't know. Okay, I'm feeling much better about this.
Well, still, congratulations.
Who knows, of course.
Yes.
I just know that she's been here 40 years.
Yes, she has.
That's great.
Well done. Any other remarks from the Board of Trustees? No? Okay. President Blanca?
Yes, thank you. It's been a very busy month, and as you know, it's just gonna get busier, because now we're going into April and then May, so it'll be fun. But we just witnessed some of the great work that Pete Laskovich and the Student Activities Department has done. And at this time, I'd also like to tell you that The Voice has won multiple awards from the Michigan Press Association, including recognition as the best two-year college newspaper in the state. The Voice won seven total awards for work that they published between August 21st and July 22nd. Our student winners included Jordan Cena won first-place awards for investigative journalism and feature story, and he was named the Best Writer. Eleanor Epperson won first place in the news story category and third place for feature story. RJ Hunt won second place for the sports column category, and Jan, wait a minute, Jan Annie Mur, wait, wait, give me a minute. Jan Annie Murogie Son. Did I do that? Jan, did I do that good? Jan Ogie Murgason.
You're gonna take your word for that.
Murogie Son. Murogie Son, right? I'm looking at, I'm looking at my writer here. Where are you? Okay, there you are. She won second place for front-page design, and we're very, very proud of all of our winners, especially our advisor, Judy McGovern. Last week, our HR department, Ted Swick and Chris Mahaly and the entire department hosted a reception for all the employees that had been hired over the past 12 months, and 33 of our recent hirees attended, and they brought guests, which I thought was very nice. Several of them brought their significant other, which was, it was very nice. So thank you for organizing that, although we're not sure if Ted came as the VP of the area or as a guest, since he was only hired then last year, right? Again, back to Pete Laskovich. Phi Theta Kappa Reach Recognition. And another great success story about our Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society chapter was just named a 2022 Reach Chapter. Phi Theta Kappa's Reach Program recognizes chapters that excel in developing their student membership. So, and you think about it, there are 1,300 PTK chapters, 1,300 PTK chapters in 11 countries with more than 3.8 million, okay, members. And we were one of the 300, I mean, it's our 294 chapters recognized. So that's, that's really impressive. So thank you again to Pete, thank you Clarence, thank you Linda for your leadership and support. And Angela, congratulations to our own Board Chair, Angela Davis. We recently learned that Angela was featured last November by SEMCOG, the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, in an article on their website. SEMCOG Planner Grant Brooks wrote the article, "An Apprenticeship Week Reflection: Angela's Story," describing Chair Davis's educational and career journey. This includes her decision to change careers after working in several other fields, to pursue her new passion of automotive design and successfully becoming a trim technician apprentice at an auto supply company, Magna Siding, last year. The author of the article, which was written to mark National Apprenticeship Week, calls Angela, quote, "an apprenticeship success story," and holds up her experience as a great example of the fantastic opportunities apprenticeships offer to anyone who has a passion to learn new skills, find a new career, and earn money while they're learning. So we're very proud of you and want to congratulate you. Free College Week is back, and VP Mueller, how exciting. It will be here soon, April 4th through 7th, and we are offering 100, more than 140 online classes. And you ready? 2,000 enrollments. Yeah, over 2,000. Oh, 2,000 in what?
2,900 right now.
2,900 enrollments. So, and I know that you were on, what, WEMU's radio station? And WJR, talking about this Free College Week. So it's really a way to get back to our community, but it's also something that, hopefully, you know, education's for everyone, and it could entice people of any age to come back to school, which would be great. So thank you. Yes, sir.
I wanted to add a word about the Michigan Press Association, The Voice, and the staff that got the recognition that they got. I think that is so commendable, especially in this media era of beleaguered print publications that are struggling to keep a reportorial staff going. And the recognition that these staff members from The Voice got is well-deserved. They'll give them some fuel to go on and excel in their trades, and I wish them well as they do so.
Would you like me to invite them to a board meeting?
I think that'd be great.
Would you like that?
Yes.
Okay, we will do that. You think they'll be around next month? April? Okay, that would be great. We'll do that. We were gonna invite them tonight, but we're walking there and coming back, so. That would be great. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Millschain. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to cover old business. On Tab E, excuse me, Tab E, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the restoration contract with Schreiber Roofing in the amount not to exceed $122,000. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
We've been supported. Any discussion? Hearing not?
I don't remember. Why was that roof put on in the first place? How long do metal roofs last?
VP Beschi?
They'll last 20 years.
20 years. That's all, that's, yeah, that's the answer. Thank you.
Wait, don't sit down yet.
VP Beschi?
A popular demand.
So the basic metal is staying there, and we're just refurbishing seams and grommets and then putting another coat of aluminum coating on it?
That is correct, yes. So, you know, they'll pressure wash, replace seams, fasteners, and then it gets a coating of a metallic weatherproof and rust-proofing material. The roof, the, I know we're applying 2 gallons per 100 square feet. I think it's a little over 300,000 square feet is the roof, the total square footage on the roof. 300. Well, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
We move on to Tab F. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the new programs for Fall 2023 as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I see none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Tab G, under our new business, for discussion, 2023 Application for Liquor Permits for Iron Workers Summer Conference. And the resolution, oh, that's Tab H. I don't want to move ahead. There any discussion on Tab G?
I'd just like to make a motion to move this to action.
Second.
Second. So how do I? How should we do this?
You're gonna vote to amend the agenda to move this to an action item?
That's what I said.
That's what I said.
So we can vote on moving it to an action item and then vote on the item itself?
Oral vote?
The vote is not a roll call vote. You move it to action.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Okay. So now do I do it?
Now, for, now the recommendation.
I move the, this is the update for liquor licenses. I move the application for liquor licenses for the iron, some iron workers' summer conference.
Second.
Question?
So I have a question in regards to the Morris Lawrence Building, because I've been to many events here that liquor is served, but I haven't seen that as part of our agenda in the past as I reviewed them. What's different regarding this event versus the usual things that happen here at the Morris Lawrence Building?
Granted.
In this case, I believe the liquor's being sold. The beer and wine's being sold. Whereas the events you're probably talking about are invite-only.
Right.
And the invites are being served, the alcohol, it's not being sold to them.
Okay. That's interesting.
Are they selling this?
It, the ironworkers purchase the liquor themselves as part of their events, and it's part of their budget, so they're not selling it to the actual members, but they're furnishing it and using their budget money to be able to purchase it for the members.
All to them.
Not from the members having to buy it, but it's being furnished, much like, so if UA was to do this, for example, UA, they have a per diem in which all of those members buy their food. The ironworkers' bonus apparatus is that they purchase everything for their members, and they keep their per diem. So they're not allocating the per diem. They're funding it out of what would be given to them. So they're not buying it, but they're being provided it in lieu of them having to buy it, if that makes any sense.
How is that different than an event that's being held here, where somebody, for example, pays a ticket price? Guess I'm still a little confused as to...
If you're, if we're selling, or if the event sells tickets, and as part of that ticket is you're purchasing the ability to drink the alcohol, you're purchasing the alcohol. So in that case, you would need a liquor license.
You're asking? You asking, let me see. Are you asking, for example, with the foundation, when we have like a reception out on the terrace, and we serve wine? If that's the same thing? Okay, is that, why is it that we can serve wine? I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, okay, because this is just a good question.
True, Vanessa, I just want to understand.
Why is it that we can serve? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it's a good question. Why can we serve wine? If you don't know the answer, okay, it's okay. But like, why can we serve wine on the terrace and not need a liquor license?
The owner?
Because we're the owner?
We're not actually selling it, we're serving it for our own alcohol. We're serving our own alcohol to our invitees. It's like a private party.
Okay.
If you invite people to your home and you serve them alcohol, you don't need a license for that.
But we're not serving it for, I see, we're not serving it to the ironworkers. They're purchasing it and serving it here. That's the difference. Okay, I get it.
But, I mean...
I don't know the ironworkers set up exactly.
Okay. So I'm fine with it. I'd just love to get some information, so at a later point, I don't need the answer right now. I just would like to get a greater understanding on how this event is different from other events that are held on campus.
But actually, it's very timely, because we haven't completed it yet, but we are looking at the board policy right now. I'm looking at Vice President Mueller, and I know that Larry has looked at it. We are looking at the board policy regarding ML, which if we make, and this is one of the questions that we will bring before you as a recommendation. So we're talking about that right now. So that's one of the reasons why we're all looking at each other, because that's exactly what we're talking about in regards to the difference, and what do you do if someone hosts a party here, and how do, how does that happen? What can they do? So we will have that for you, probably the whole board, as a recommended policy to look at.
Michigan Liquor Control Commission guidelines will also be a part of that thinking, right?
Right. Thank you for your questions, because that's exactly what we're discussing.
That's a good question, because as long as I've been here, I just never questioned, I don't think any past board members questioned it. It was always like grandfathered in. If there was a, like, the ironworkers is one thing, and then when we have the roofers and the others, you know, it's a different thing. But it was never questioned about it. So that, that is something to think about.
Is there anything, Vice President Mueller? Do you want to say anything right now? You don't have to.
I, oh.
Mueller, Vice President Mueller?
I was just gonna say that, you know, the differences, the ironworkers right now, they're the only, they're the only trade union group that serves alcohol on campus. The other three groups do not.
Okay.
And I think it's important to note that the ironworkers also, in serving that alcohol, it is with a meal, so they provide all of the food. And of course, on these four nights, beer, wine, or spirits, depending on the night, which is a little bit different than other trade unions, in which those members have to buy their meals. The ironworkers actually have the largest spend of all of our trade unions, around 230,000 a year in catering costs, in comparison to maybe like UA that spends about 70,000 to 80,000.
But we will have an answer.
I'd just like to suggest that we don't include a liquor license for Board of Trustees dinners before meetings.
Wait until after meetings?
Right, exactly.
During.
Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Hold on. No, we didn't vote on it. No, we did not.
We did not. We haven't voted. We have, yeah. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair Davis? Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarty?
Devarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Tab H, resolution to recommend the allowable 2023, 2024 add valarium tax rate. VP Barnes?
Yes, just to clarify what we're asking here, basically, we're asking that when we develop the 2024 budget, that we use the full millage rate when we're preparing that budget, which should result, our estimate right now is approximately $70 million.
Thank you. Trustee Hatcher?
I move that we move tab H to a roll call vote tonight.
Second.
In so doing, we need to amend the agenda? Do we know?
Yes.
An aye.
Exactly.
So this is a voice?
Voice vote on amending the agenda.
We have a voice vote on amending the agenda from discussion to action. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we do a roll call?
Yes.
Vanessa, you call the roll, please.
We need a recommendation.
Thank you.
I move that we recommend the allowable 2023 to 24 add valarium tax rate, which at its current rate of 3.3548 mils will generate approximately $70,92,150 of gross tax revenue.
Support? Now we need a roll call.
Vanessa, you call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Can I just make one discussion?
Yes, please.
I just want to note and thanks for our voters in the county and our constituency throughout the county for being so generous in passing the millages that we've recently put before the voters, and they've approved these millages at more than 70% of those voting electorate. And I want to thank the voters and recognize that this money, it's our duty to make sure that we continue to invest it in good ways that deliver top-quality education and other services to this county and its voters. Thank you.
Vanessa, you call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarty?
Devarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Tab I is an action, revision to 2023 schedule of board meetings. It is recommended that the Board of Trustees move their monthly meetings and annual retreat from Towesley Auditorium in the Morris Lawrence Building to the Seminar Room, ML 101, 103, 123 of the Morris Lawrence Building. Do I hear a motion?
I so move.
Second.
Any question? Vanessa, please call the roll.
I just wanted to point out to the public that that is moving the meeting to this room,
and I want to remark to how much better the sound quality is here than it is in Towesley when we have our meetings there, and I think this is a very wise thing to do.
Thank you. Trustee Devarty. Vanessa, you please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarty?
Devarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
I move to adjourn tonight's monthly meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Second.
It is now adjourned. Thank you.
You have to say all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess I want to go.